Good evening, and I will call the Eastlime Board of Selectment public hearing on the FEMA flood ordinance to order and note that it was not properly posted in the day as required, so we're required to adjourn this immediately and postpone it to the meeting of the 18th. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Some.
Okay, moved is by Dan, seconded by Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned from the public hearing. Moving on to the regular meeting, call to order and adjourn us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Quinn, would you lead us, please? Are there any additional agenda consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none, is there any member? Oh, I thought you said them. Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board? Going once. Okay, moving on. Moving on to the approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve the special meeting of April 14th, 2022?
I'll move to accept the minutes of April 14th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any comments?
Were there any corrections?
Are there?
No, it's not.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, that submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. And now into the regular meeting minutes of April 20th. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Removed by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan, any comments or corrections?
There's a comment that I wasn't present, but I did review the video, so I can vote on it.
Okay.
And there's one correction on page three. At the top of the page, under ex officio reports, it was Ann Caccello, Ms. Caccello, who reported about the Historic Properties Commission. So I've mentioned to Sandy that that's a change that can be made. And then because of that change, there's just a couple of other word changes, nothing substantive in the rest of that paragraph, where I'm reporting about the Board of Education. So, but we can just, there's a few word changes, again, nothing substantive.
Okay.
Just to reflect that there's basically two reports going on. Ann and I were sitting next to each other, so it's not uncommon for us to, you know, be confused.
Okay. Okay, so nothing substantive then?
Right.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Okay, move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of May 4th, 2022 in the amount of $8,813.71.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and it carries unanimously. Moving on, the first action item is the CNRE JAG grant. The Eastlime Police Department has been awarded. It's a pass through funding every year, comes in through OPM, it's fairly self-explanatory here. Ann, anything you have to add to that at all?
It says that we need to appropriate the funds.
Yeah, we, we, this is one of those grants, we get the money, so now we have to appropriate the money we got. So, you know, it's, the funding source is the grant itself, so. Any questions on that? Or let's, let's get a motion on there and then we can see if any comments.
Move to approve an appropriation in the amount of $25,000 to CNRE Fund 32 and establish an account titled JAG Grant Projects, authorize purchase from Star Computers and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, a town meeting required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. I'll let Sandy decide who had the second there. Any comments or questions regarding this, or any comments?
So, we have the money in hand.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So, we've been awarded the grant and we've received 50% of it at this time. And then we will, at a subsequent date, receive the second 50%, but we have been awarded the full grant.
Okay, so my question is, can they go ahead with purchasing if we only have 50% of the money? Are we guaranteed with the 50%?
It, well, it's through a grant award, so I feel confident that we will receive the full grant.
This is a fairly common grant, too.
Yes, that's correct.
It comes through on a regular basis.
A JAG grant, and that's why I'm recommending to title the grant JAG Grant Projects, because we expect to receive future grants.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments? All those in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Moving on to the grant vehicle acquisition, we have something for the, that Kathy Wilson's bringing forward. Kathy, would you like to come on up, give us your name and your position?
Kathy Wilson, Senior Senate Director. So, this is, I believe, the fourth vehicle we've acquired through the 5310 grant. And it's usually an 18-month cycle where you, excuse me, write the grant and submit it in March, hear about it in May or June, whether you received it or not, and then the actual vehicle acquisition happens the following summer. So I reached out to the salesman today from Matthew Buses, who's been the gentleman that we've dealt with for the past MTM times, and just to verify, again, the price, what the town obligation is, and when the vehicle was going to arrive. And he indicated the vehicle is not likely to come into Eastlime until the end of 2022 or the beginning of 2023. So that is sort of off schedule for what typically happens with us. So I did notify the, the Highway Department that they need to keep one more vehicle alive and well until this new one comes in. So, but the vehicle, I don't have, the, the town obligation's going to be $34, essentially, the whole, the majority of the cost is being covered through the 5310 grant, but there'll be a $34 difference that we'll have to come up with. But, you know, your process of having to appropriate it and whatever, that's yours.
Okay, any questions for Kathy before we move forward with this? None?
Move to approve an appropriation in the amount of $70,284 in CNRE Fund 32 for the purchase of a new 16-passenger and two-wheelchair bus to be utilized at the senior center. Delivery expected late summer '22 to account number
Sorry.
That's okay. To account number 32-40-400-700-702, COA DOT 5310 bus, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further questions or discussion?
If this is going to be late in '22, do we want to strike the word "summer" from that?
It's definitely not going to be this summer. It's going to either be fall or winter of 2023.
Do we need to reread?
I would just strike the word "summer."
Okay.
So it's late in '22, or '23.
'23. Yeah, delivery expected in late 2022, early 2023.
Correct.
And Sandy, you got the corrections to the motion?
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Anna, we can handle the $34?
Yes.
You can take up a collection.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
My thank you to Chief Finkelstein and Ms. Wilson for venturing forth and finding some money for us.
Definitely. Okay, affordable housing consultant contract. Gary, let's, let you discuss this and why we have it, basically, you know, it's, it's a several part.
Good evening, procedure here. Gary Gashill, Town Planner. We were awarded a $15,000 grant from the Department of Housing back in 2021. With that, we started to move forward. We do have a requirement to expend those funds by October 30th of 2022. However, pursuant to the agreement that was executed, the application certification, it's, in the case that we have to ask for an extension, we can, so long as that's done 90 days before the grant end date of October 31st, 2022, that would be August 2nd. With that said, being that where, where we're at in this process, we formed a subcommittee to evaluate two consultants who replied to a request for proposals to assist in this venture of updating our affordable housing plan. That subcommittee landed on Gorman and York. So now that we're ready to enter into a contract with them, we need to have the money appropriated and to start moving forward. That said, it's my intention to immediately contact Department of Housing and request that extension now, because we know we're going to need it. And most likely, I'll request up to a year, just because we're about a year from where we, we want it to be begin. And I would say the delay came in that COVID staffing. It's just, it was just difficult in addressing this in a timely fashion and forming that subcommittee and getting it forward. But once we did, things are, things are on track. So I think that the money's available. I don't see why Department of Housing would not grant us an extension, being that we're, we're ready to enter into an agreement with a vendor. So, is there any questions? I'd be happy to, to answer.
Questions for Gary before we put a motion on the board?
Yes, I wonder if you could tell us who served as the subcommittee?
Sure. We had Michelle Williams. She, I'm sorry, she was not on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, she was on the POCD. Kirk Scott was our chair, Jason Diebel was the vice chair, both from planning at the time. And we also had Norman Peck, I think was involved. What was the other? This is right downtown, box here. Name's fleeting, me.
It's basically zoning and planning.
It was a combination of planning and zoning members?
Yeah.
That comprised that.
And did you say there was a community member?
A member at large. I don't believe we had, we invited, I don't know that we selected one, but we used members from both planning and zoning. So that, that committee is still intact, wanting to move forward, and they would, the plan is to meet with the vendor as soon as we enter into this contract, although we can't have them do any work yet until we, I think, have this appropriated.
So normally, affordable housing falls under zoning?
Affordable housing site development, yes. So we are, under statute, required to update our affordable housing plan, and that is a function of the Planning Commission. That is the, one of their documents, along with the Plan of Development. Interestingly, unlike the plan, which is updated every 10, the Plan of Development, which is updated every 10 years, this affordable housing plan has to be updated every five, statutorily. So we'll just keep that in mind moving forward.
So when the plans actually come in, then zoning takes over?
The, the plan is just a, it's a guidance document for where we want and how we'd like to see affordable housing built throughout the town. Once that plan's established, hopefully that will help guide where we, indirect, where that housing's located. However, that said, we still have 830G out there, and landowners can still apply under the statute anywhere, you know, they, so choose, if you will, under that statute.
Thank you, you anticipated my next question. 830G still, this doesn't override it?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
Other questions for Gary?
Yeah.
Ann?
So Gary, what other firm submitted proposals?
SLG was the other firm. They were out of Cheshire. They were, they're based globally in the UK, so.
I see. And this is a Connecticut firm that you
Gorman and York is a, correct.
I'm staring hard for that. So I noticed that they had some references, they had done the planning, affordable planning for Stonington and Wyndham, I think?
Yes.
So, and have you contacted Stonington and Wyndham about them?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, yes, we followed up on their referrals, all positive. In particular, the response was they go above and beyond. So I think the subcommittee felt comfortable with if we're going to get more than we bargained for. That said, I know Don Poland from Planning Circles, he's a very well-versed planner. He has a doctorate in planning from the University of Oxford in England, so, and he does many presentations and teaches and lectures here in Connecticut.
I was just glad to see that they had done recent work on the topic. It was very on point.
Yes.
Because often, you know, these, the resumes get close to what, you know, covering what you need to have happen, but this was very on point, so I think that's
Yes, we were satisfied. That was excellent, that just so happened. And we only got two, two proposals.
Okay.
So.
Other questions?
Just on the payments, so we'll be paying them starting in the second month, $2,900 a month. Do we have the grant money yet, or how will that work?
It's a reimbursable grant, so as soon as the, the money's appropriated, I'll contact DOH, we'll get the invoice from the vendor, and we would start paying them and then requesting from the state reimbursement.
So we'll be clearing the money through our account base? We'll be getting the money from the state, then?
Reimbursing, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, Gary, well presented. Ann, is there a motion for us?
Yes. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $15,000 in CNRE Fund 32. Let's see, we have two motions. We have the Affordable, one second.
Yeah.
This is two, I'm sorry.
You're on 2C.
2C. Move to approve a special appropriation, the amount of $15,000 in CNRE Fund 32 to an account to be established Affordable Housing Planning Grant for the grant awarded by the State Department of Housing for professional consulting and technical services to update the plan of affordable housing, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Now the second part. Sandy, didn't we have three parts to this at one time, but we got it down to two or something?
That's good.
Okay.
So, I can move the following.
Yes.
Resolve to authorize the first selectman to execute a contract in the name and on behalf of the town with Gorman and York of East Hartford, Connecticut, for the preparation, updating, and adoption of the Eastlime Affordable Housing Plan in the form presented to the Board of Selectmen at its meeting of May 4th, 2022.
So a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, and that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Moving on, Mr. Burgos here today, do we have some repairs that we need to do to one of our trash trucks and so forth? Remember, several months ago, we, it's about the same amount we had for the fire truck. There seems to be a popular figure when repairs come. So, Joe, I'll let you present it. Go ahead.
Well, Public Works Department was very appreciative of allowing us to get a new garbage truck with American Rescue Funds. That was, we got the authorization Thursday, and we were fortunate enough to find a truck that rolled in on Monday, 47,000 less than we thought, because we got a last-year model from another town. So anyways, the point being is, we got the new trucks, but we have two spare trucks. Spare trucks are the yellow ones, if you ever see around. The front lines are white, they just happen to be that way. We have two spare trucks. One is horrible, it should get off the road, but it has a good arm, the automated arm. The other spare truck is a very good truck that has an engine that doesn't work. So what we like to do is fix the good truck, take the good arm from the bad truck, and then have one really good spare truck and get rid of the other truck. That would require us to spend $20,000 on getting that. And you can't take the engine from the bad truck, because that engine's bad, too. So that's what we're asking here. It's a big cut on fleet maintenance with all of the costs of, increasing costs of repairs. So this is, talking to Anna Johnson, this fund, this CNRE fund is exactly, money's put into this for these kind of things. This would really ensure us for garbage trucks the next, at least two, three years, of having good frontline trucks. And the other thing it does is have good spare trucks. Before, we weren't able to take the frontline trucks off to get the proper, all the, all the maintenance thing, because they had to be on the road. So this, this sure is a really good service and reliable truck. So if we can move forward, this would really set us in a good situation for garbage and recycling collection.
Questions for Joe?
Is there any sense in keeping the truck that's really bad?
No, it has, we're gonna, we can pull the parts off it, we're planning on pulling the parts off it, but we're just gonna scrap it, it's that bad. So we can pull all the important things off of it, which, that's what we're doing, we're gonna take the arm. But beyond that, it's not really worth, I mean, we're trying to find the best fit of value plus getting, you know, resale, or basically, you know, trying to get any kind of salvage value is the word I'm looking for.
I just saw an article a couple weeks ago that their prices are really high for scrap metal.
Yeah, they are. And we have a very good scrap metal contract in town. We get 90% of the New York rate. So every time people bring, so, we could get some decent money with, I mean, it's garbage trucks, it's a lot of scrap metal. So, but we will have a very reliable, with this proposal, we'll have a very reliable spare truck, and then we'll just move on from that other truck.
Sounds like a good plan.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so, so it looks like you're getting an engine, but it's, it's what they're saying the trade is a short block, it's gonna be
Rebuild, yeah.
Rebuild, then you're gonna add all the peripherals back onto it.
That's the extra 3,000 of all the ancillary
Is that gonna be enough, do you think?
Uh, this is coming from the fleet manager. All this information is given to the fleet manager, who works on these things all the time, and this is what he's asking that will set. He's the one telling me, this is the money he needs to make it work.
That'll make it happen.
That's what he's telling me, so.
Thank you.
Better do it fast before the prices go up.
Any other questions? Oh, motion, please?
Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $23,000 from CNRE account 32-30-400-700-999, PWD, reserve to replace the existing engine in one of the town's garbage trucks, parentheses, 76EL, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, seconded by Bill. Any further comments? Again, oh, there you are, Joe already went back and sat down. Thank you for, you know, bringing this to our attention, you know, getting to the point now where we do have a reliable backup truck, because I know just a few months ago, just every week picking up garbage was a challenge, so.
Yeah, we only had two working trucks
Yeah.
For about a month.
I know.
Which was on five.
Yes, exactly. So, okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Moving on to item 2F.
F.
This is a really interesting one. About a year ago, the state established, basically, a five-cent surcharge on the little nip bottles that people frequently go into package stores and purchase. It's not as if you return them, you can get the nickel, but if anybody has walked down Main Street now, you'll see them on the side in the gutter and so forth like that. So now the towns get up, those, the money comes back to the towns through the distributors. So this year, or this for the period from October to April, Eastlime recognized a cash award of $12,421.80. And, you know, this is for the quiet time of year. I mean, it's gonna be probably even bigger when you take an exception, goes over the summer. There are some restrictions on this. You basically have to use it for something along, you know, solid waste, you know, disposal, and basically, you know, keeping the things clean, recycling and so forth like that. So Anna, you have an idea of how, what to at least do at the start of this, because Main Street Organization has some ideas, too. They'd like to upgrade the garbage cans in the Main Street area. They have some composting garbage pails, which would be far more, you know, appealing to the eye, and much more reliable as far as containing than the ones down there now. So there are some thoughts, but even before we get that, we have to establish where the funds are gonna go, and, and so they can be accessible and so forth. So Anna?
Yeah, I think you, you covered it very well. The recommendation is to put the funds in the CNRE fund, since we'll probably have overlapping years relative to expending the funds. And in addition to that, we may want to build up the funds to, you know, purchase something, you know, a little more pricier at some point, some point in the future. So I think once we see what happens during the next six months, that'll give us probably a better idea of what our expectations, you know, will be going forward. I mean, it, when you think of it, that $12,000 represents, you know, 250,000 little bottles.
Quarter of a million little bottles, yeah.
That was a little overwhelming.
And that's on the slowest.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's scary.
I mean, I've, you know, I've gone on these days where we pick up trash and things, and I am just amazed at the number of those little bottles that are out there. I mean, it's, they're everywhere. And it's great, so it's, am I understanding it right that there's gonna be a nickel deposit now on those little bottles?
Well, it's a surcharge.
It's a surcharge.
So, surcharge.
So if you take it back, you don't get it.
You don't get it, okay.
No. You're, you're paying a surcharge of a nickel on those, and that way, it gives us a reliable source of, and it, it's very specific in what you can get, you know, similar to the ARPA funds. For instance, at some point in time, if we have the resources, we could even build a small sweeper and stuff like that. And obviously, we get the input from Parks and Rec and Public Works, too, about how this can best be utilized as we move forward, so.
So we'll get this annually, this?
But we'll, we'll get it twice a year. Basically, October to April, and then April to October. And, you know, the thought is, I would think April to October would be a busier time of year, so it would be interesting to see what the, the amount we get in October will be, so. But anyway, okay.
Move to, to establish corresponding revenue and expenditure accounts in CNRE Fund 32 for the purpose of setting aside funds collected for the five-cent surcharge on 50-milliliter nip liquor bottles in accordance with SB 1037, an Act Concerning Solid Waste Management, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Account to be entitled Surcharge SB 1037.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further comments? Okay, all in favor, signify, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously. Moving on, it's about the time of year when we do our interdepartmental transfers. Anna, I'll let you discuss this.
Yeah, typically, I've come before you a couple of times already during the fiscal year for these transfers. This is actually the first time this fiscal year. That's why the number is so large. There's, in June of this year, or actually last year, we had a refunding bond sale. And what that did is it kind of realigned payments. And so we needed to make transfers within the, the debt payments to get the funding in the proper account. So there were, you know, several of those transfers, and that makes up a substantive portion of the transfers. And then we've also had to make some transfers in legal. We had to retain special counsel for some land use suits that we're dealing with. And so we had to make some transfers into a couple of legal accounts. And we had the resources available, because, as you know, we had the, we had a study done on our pension plan, and we were able to, through that process, lower what we're paying in our annual required contribution. So we have the resources available within, within the department, so we, we made those transfers. In Public Works, there are some transfers, because we made a, a change in one of the positions. We went from a union general foreman to a, a general foreman outside of the union, more consistent with the, the, the model that we use in the, in the past. So we had to transfer between some accounts to, you know, reallocate the resources where they needed to be. And I think that kind of covers some of the, some of the larger, the larger ones. I don't know if anyone has any questions in particular that they might have, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions for Anna on any of the items, line items? Okay. Okay, is there a motion for the transfer?
Yes, there is.
Sure.
Move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of $526,210.50 processed for fiscal year end, June 30, 2022, and to forward to the Board of Finance for and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. And the next one is a special appropriation, CNRE Fund Thirty-two, Storm Isaiah FEMA. Anna?
So gee, back in August of two thousand and twenty, we were hit with Tropical Storm Isaiah, and our Public Works crews had to go out and clean quite a bit of debris up as a result of that storm. So this represents the submission for the cleaning of the debris. So it was wages and use of our equipment. And so the thought was to, you know, allocate these funds into our CNRE fund. And the other agenda item this evening, the engine replacement on that trash truck, that's, you know, the very type of thing that we would, we would want to use these resources for. So it just makes sense to set them aside in CNRE. And that way, at some point in the future, when we, we have a need for some type of public works equipment or repair to public works equipment, we'll have some resources available.
Questions for Anna?
Okay. Move to approve a special appropriation in CNRE Fund Thirty-two to account thirty-two dash thirty dash four hundred dash seven hundred dash nine nine nine, titled PWD Reserve for Future Allocation for Public Works Department Equipment, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And carries unanimously. Moving on, under, last item under new business, we have a couple of appointments for boards, commissions and other things.
So move to appoint Eric Quinn, Nineteen Hillwood Drive, Niantic, to serve as a deputy fire marshal for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second that.
And that's been seconded by Dan. Eric is here, and Eric has worked as a dispatcher, and he's just recently been hired full-time up at the Mohegan Tribe as a deputy fire marshal. But he does have, you know, the time to serve and work with us as a deputy fire marshal. So Eric, thank you for your years of support and service to the Town of East Line. We're looking forward to you back on as deputy fire marshal. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
And next appointment, move to appoint Mark Salerno, Eight Bob White Lane, East Line, as deputy town meeting moderator for the Town of East Line with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty-twenty-six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Comments? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Eric, thank you very much. You can stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to go home and spend time with your family. Eric's wife just earned her bachelor degree this past weekend, so congratulations to her, Eric, as well. Yeah, congratulations. Moving on, we had talked about the fifteen thousand, or the appropriation we'd be looking for today to contract with Silver Petrocelli to evaluate the permeability of the exterior of the new public safety building, provide some solutions, cross estimate and construction plans and specifications. Bill Share was, did a very good job presenting last time, and his intent was to be here tonight, but he had a little bit of a injury over the weekend to where he's not capable. He has some, looks like some broken ribs. So he said he could come if we really needed him. I think, Joe, you and I both felt that, stay home. So, you know, we have the both of them here, and one from Jakunski and Humes, and then the one from Silver Petrocelli. Obviously, there's a bit of a difference in pricing, so we went with Silver Petrocelli. Bill did extensive discussions with them. They do have experts in this field on their staff, so he's very comfortable with that. And just to point out, too, that this proposal, not included in what we're going to initially appropriate or request the appropriation tonight, is the fifty-six hundred dollars for bidding and construction oversight. That would be part of Phase Two, when we actually move with whoever's going to do the work to include that fifty-six hundred dollars with that, that cost there. And Anna, would you like to just talk for a minute about the funding for this? I think that would help.
Okay, sure. So when, when we go to market for bond and note sales, they, we typically get paid some premium dollars. And so the intent of the premium dollars is to assist with project costs. So typically, when we receive invoicing from like our bond counsel or any short-term interest that we have on the project, financial advisor. So all of those fees are paid from the premium dollars. We do have some additional fees in the case of this project. I did confer with bond counsel to confirm that it was acceptable to use the funds for, you know, project-related. So that's why we're, you know, we are recommending this source of funds for, you know, since it has to do with the public safety building.
Agreed. And as, when Bill first brought this up, you know, Bill said, you know, he could, he knows pretty much his research and knows what the, what needs to be done. But Bill was very adamant that he is not an expert. And considering we're requesting to use town funds and so forth like that, we want to make sure we have someone who has experts to make the recommendation and see the repairs done to that, so.
Yeah. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the evaluation of the permeability of the exterior of the new public safety building, provide solution options, a cost estimate, and the production of construction plans and specifications to an account to be established in the Project Fund Fifty-seven, titled PS Building Masonry Repair. Source of funding to be from bond and note sale premium funds and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roseanne. Any further comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously.
It's very nice that we had two, two bids, two separate bids from two companies that have done extensive work in the town.
Yes. And as Bill pointed out, he did reach out to four contractors, and we did get these both back. So, yeah, I agree, Roseanne. Moving on, we've already tabled with not being able to do the public hearing until our next meeting, we won't be doing this item three B for discussion prospect on the, what?
That's where you're going to do it. We have to do the.
Oh, yeah, we're not going to, yeah. But we're going to do the call to the, yes, thank you.
Okay. So I will read that. Okay. Okay, to schedule a public hearing for May eighteenth, move the following. Town of East Line Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of an Amendment to an Ordinance Entitled Flood Damage Prevention, Town Ordinance Chapter One Fifty-One. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the East Line Board of Selectmen at seven PM on May eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, at the East Line Town Hall, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider the adoption of an amendment to an, to an ordinance entitled Flood Damage Prevention, Town Ordinance Chapter One Fifty-One. Said ordinance provides regulatory controls for flooding in the Town of East Line. A copy of the full text of the proposed ordinance is on file for public inspection at the Office of the East Line Town Clerk, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut. And at http://www.easltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at East Line, Connecticut, on this day, May fourth, twenty-twenty-two, East Line Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Moving on, that completes all business. Moving on to ex officio reports. This is what I started with Roseanne last time. I'll start with Bill this time. Work this way.
Ann covered the building meeting for me, and there wasn't a planning meeting.
Okay. Okay, Ann.
So, yes, I covered for Bill on the twenty-first of April, while he was away. The Town Building Committee, there are a couple of items of interest. Lily B. Haynes, the floor, library floor moisture repair issue. That will happen after school lets out. There's a testing, moisture testing yet to occur, I believe. But in any event, the cost of labor and materials to put down some new carpeting is forty thousand, eight hundred dollars. And that, as I said, will be happening after school lets out. Anna had mentioned that there's about, on the public safety building, Rocky said, "All are happy." So.
Okay.
I just wanted to give, you know, relate that message to you. Everyone he's spoken to are happy. And Anna indicated that there's about two hundred thousand dollars of the budget encumbered with POs yet to be paid. And good news with the as-built drawings, the finals have all been received by the town just this week. So that's, that's good. And my other ex officio assignment was library, which occurred this past Monday evening. The annual report has been distributed, very lovely.
They do a nice one, they do.
Beautifully done. New library cards for children, and they are absolutely adorable. They're little bears and, you know, in the shape of bears. And you don't have to be a child to request one if you, if you would like one like that. This November will be the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of our library. And they will be having a special event of some kind. They haven't decided yet. The board will decide how to celebrate that event. And the two other things that happened, which were very interesting, the board passed a library bill of rights. This is based on the American Association of Libraries model. It's a very short document, about less than a page long, basically ensuring the, you know, lack of censorship or the freedom for libraries to have information from various, you know, spheres and from, you know, on all thoughts and so forth. And, and also to protect, there's a provision in that library bill of rights to protect patrons, you know, from having their information, library information disseminated. And so that passed. And then there was a draft document that was discussed concerning confidentiality of patrons, a more specific document, which has, you know, has a number of provisions. And Mark Zamarka is a member of the Board of Trustees and has, going to, has volunteered to help go through the legalities of that document and, and help with some drafting of it. But Lisa had, had already done quite a bit of legwork, found a sample document. But it's very interesting, you know, ways to protect information. If you're a patron, you give information, and that, that needs to be protected. But there have to be exceptions and so forth, so some more to come on that. But many topics covered that this past Monday, but those are the main highlights.
Okay. Dan?
Let's see, well, on the twenty-first, I was, I covered the zoning commission meeting for Roseanne. And there were two major items. There was, first, there was a public hearing, and then there was a regular meeting. They approved an application for an Anic Bay nutrition. It was a special permit to operate a juice bar at eighty-one Pennsylvania Avenue. So that was approved. That's not far from the Dairy Queen. So you have a choice. You can eat healthy, or you can go to the Dairy Queen and enjoy. And then there was also a request of, by Fresh Line Partners LLC for a special permit to operate a cannabis establishment at the, at fifteen Colton Road, East Line, Connecticut. And that was approved as well. So that was, that was the zoning meeting. The other thing I got to do a couple of weeks, about two weeks ago, I was able to represent East Line and the Board of Selectmen at the Elks Dinner. It was a Saturday night, and they were honoring three people. There were three proclamations that I presented. And one of the proclamations was a resident and citizen of East Line, Rena Powers. And she does wonderful things. She collects medical equipment that's used and clothing and redistributes it to people that have a need for that sort of thing. And she warehouses it and repairs it and gets it to the hands of people that could really use, you know, wheelchairs and walkers and those sorts of things. So really wonderful thing that she does, and she's a member of our community. And I was happy to be able to be there and present her with that proclamation, so. That's my report.
Roseanne?
Well, everyone else has done such a good job. I don't think I need to say anything.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on, first election report, a couple of, up of the, last Saturday was, morning was Little League opening ceremonies. It was really nice to have all the teams come out and kick off the season. They've already actually started playing, but it was the official opening day. And they recognized Smith Acres and Niantic Plumbing for their years of support for our Little League. It was nice to see that. Then last week, in the Stonington and East Line lacrosse game, it was the yearly live to, lax-to-live lacrosse game. It's, you know, Brian's Healing Hearts and the Dagel Foundation. They come out at the game to make sure everybody's aware of the warning signs because of what they went through with their son. And what was noteworthy was after the game, the Stonington lacrosse team posed for a picture with Paul Dagel, because obviously he and Anna, it's their foundation. Then after that, each member of the Stonington lacrosse team went up and shook Mr. Dagel's hand and thanked him for what he's doing and how he's helping other people. So I made sure Danielle Cheeseborough, the first selectman in Stonington, I emailed her to thank her the, that, the following day. So just something uplifting there. Some interesting things coming up. At our next meeting, Dave Putnam's going to come in and give us a very brief presentation on, you know, we appropriated some art money for bathrooms, and these will be composting bathrooms. They're year-round. They're about seventy-five thousand dollars apiece, and his hope is to be able to get three of them to play some, you know, hole-in-the-wall, McCooks and so forth like that. These are year-round. You wouldn't know it was anything but a regular bathroom. So he's going to come and give a little bit more detail, but just to talk about that. And on the same thing, Alex Close, the town engineer, has been doing some research and gave him some information, talking about sidewalks. The Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments has been given some money to allocate to the local towns under its jurisdiction for roadway and sidewalk upgrade, repairs or extensions. You have to request at least three hundred thousand and no more than a million. So he's done some research and what we could really do. There's a plan already in progress to extend a sidewalk at the north end of town from Walgreens up to where Dollar General is in the fall. That wouldn't be affected by this. But he looked at all the places in town where we'd like to possibly have sidewalks. The Route one sixty-one corridor, that's already a study. Route one fifty-six from the Black Point Four Corners down, heading down west. But then you come to the bridge, so that's a little bit involved. East Patagonia Road is a road they figure they have a really good chance of. So he's preparing a, the preliminary grant request. It has to be submitted within the next two weeks. And he's got the, we're also going to notify all the people that live in that road and let them know what the intentions are, so we might be able to look at that. If the grant is a war, if they say, yep, years qualify, then we move to the actual grant request. So it's a several-tiered process, but something positive for looking, getting some sidewalks done. Garbage truck, Joe already talked about it. We allocated three hundred and forty thousand. The next day, he was able to get it for two hundred and ninety-three, and we already have the vehicle, which is really impressive. I had a Mr. Ed Shapiro come in. He lives in Crescent Beach. He wanted to talk about, and he had some documentation of beach erosion that's been going on over the years. And the Crescent Beach Association wants to come up with a remediation plan. And they were able to show a lot of it was a result of Hurricane Sandy. So, you know, depending upon what's that, you know, we can look at it because we still have over a hundred thousand dollars of funds from FEMA for Hurricane Sandy. So he just brought that to our attention. Main Street Organization had their yearly breakfast Monday morning. Just an update on what was going on. I brought them up to date on the Amtrak fence, which is, we haven't heard anything new. But we haven't heard anything bad either, so we're still working on that. Their farmer's market starts June ninth and will run through September. So that was the main things on there. And they just urged everybody, come on down and visit Main Street during the, and they were very happy to see there's some plan to get bathrooms in. Memorial Day Parade, it's at two PM. So if you want to, if we. So if you want to, if we march, which we always do, we have to meet at 1:30 up on Columbus Ave for the parade. They've got a lot of people reaching out so far this year, hoping for a good turnout. And the Memorial Day Vigil is the previous night, Sunday, the 29th, at 6:00 PM at the, at the town green, at the, at the green, at the vets' green down there. So that'll be run by the Veterans Council. CCM updated all the budget awards this year. We got more than we thought we were going to get. We got an extra $6,277, which is .01% more than we anticipated, so it's better than the other way. John Way, the fire marshal, was offered a job with the state, so he's tendered his resignation and tomorrow, his official last day is next Tuesday, but tomorrow is his last day and he's using up some unused vacation time. I've reached out, I've knew a couple of retired state fire marshals, so I've, I've offered one of them on an interim job basis right now to bring him in because we need to have someone desperately in there. And Eric's going to be able to do some schedule adjustments to give us some time to, so we'll have him as an interim starting next, next Wednesday. The budget, at the public hearing, after that, they adjourned to a meeting, they totaled, a total of $1.3 million was taken out of this year's funds to put towards next year's budget, which was just about what they raised in the tax sale and all the properties that were delinquent, that they got money from. And their feeling was, this is tax dollars that we had not been getting for the last several years and this should be used to help ease the tax increase on the taxpayers. And this was, so they basically did that and assumed, with an assumption of a 98.2 collection rate on the budget. So, and there's still plenty of money to put in the undesignated fund bills to bring a, undesignated fund balance to bring us up to that 15%, which is the absolute ideal one level they, bond and rating companies like to see towns at, so we've gotten to 15% with this. Which means, and don't forget, the town meeting is next Monday at 7:00 PM. Of course, the only thing will be voting on the capital plan, that's at the actual budget itself adjourns to a town meeting. And the referendum is on the 19th, from 8:00 to 8:00 at the Community Center. One of the things to note where in the, in the budget process is, at the end of it, Rich Steele pointed out that they had a lot of good discussions, disagreements and came to consensus, but he commented on the collegiality because I think both boards, it went really well this year. And it was a tough budget with some of the things we added to it and needed, but, so nice comments by Rich.
So what was the final, was there a final cut for us?
The final cut for us was including the cut from the capital plan for the garbage truck that we didn't need the money for, was $205,000 and change, and $500,000 to the Board of Ed. And that, and here again, what we're going to, what we're going to show Monday though, is we're not going to show, because when we do that, it makes it look like we cut the budget. We're going to show what the actual budget increase is vice what was reduced from it because our budgets did increase, but we just, you know, cut back on the amount of the increase because it always sounds like we cut the budget, when we didn't, we increased it. Water and sewer update, water and sewer rates are going to be going up a little bit this year, just for a lot of infrastructure costs and so forth like that, but still much lower than surrounding towns if you look at it. Meter replacement are going around, we're about a third of the way done in town. The unfortunate thing is sometimes when these meter replacements are done, older meters report less than you're actually using, the new ones don't. So some people have seen some increases in their water bills that we're trying to address downstairs and help them out with. And the American Rescue Plan funds, they've all been as appropriate and so forth like that. I'm finishing up a letter and town attorney is going to, within the next day or two, getting me the form they have to fill out when they pick up their funds. So just, that's about it too. And whether you go to Dairy Queen or the nutrition bar, you're not going to be disappointed, Dan, I've been to both.
They're both great.
So they're both very good, so. In fact, do them both and then you'll.
There you go.
Fine, so, so any, any questions, any so forth?
Yeah, back in December, when we were talking about the bylaws, you said that we'll wait till there was some kind of direction on hybrid meetings.
Okay, I just signed something today, or I'm going to sign something, to have them moving forward. We're going to put some bigger screen TVs in here. It was a lot more involved than we first just thought it was going to be because as we did a hybrid meeting, it would be behind us, we'd be having to do that. So now we're going to have TVs posted out here and one in the lobby, so if we have to do that. So Joe just got back with the figures, a little bit more than we thought, but we do have the money and the account to cover it, so we're, we're moving on that now. We're getting close.
When do you think that might be completed?
In today's world? I would think with it, I would think within the next couple of months, but if, I'll try and get a better, a better number for the next meeting. Somebody remind me before the next meeting, we want to talk about that and then we'll get that, so. Okay, that's it. Communications, we had the final grand list figures, a little bit of a reduction by the Board of Assessment Appeals, but nothing, thing, Costco has filed an appeal on their assessment and that's beyond, they, that's beyond, it's not a Board of Assessment Appeals, they're going to basically filing an appeal with court on that, so.
Say that again, please.
Costco is filing an appeal on, to the courts on our assessment of their property because Board of Assessment Appeals address it, but they, they're appealing their decision.
Isn't that a surprise?
So does that mean they don't pay their taxes until that's adjudicated?
No, that's not, that's not the case at all.
That's going to be.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and I.
You start a business in town and you know what the taxes are going to be. And then after three years in business, you contest your taxes?
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Any public comment? None? Okay, so there's no selectmen's response to that, so just a brief update on Hathaway Farms LLC, so I'll need a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters.
Okay.
Hathaway Farms LLC.
Okay, move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters, Hathaway Farms LLC. The board is entering into executive session at 7:58 PM.
Second.
The move is seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in executive session.
Okay. I guess the, the board has returned from its executive session at 8:20 PM and it, no formal votes were taken.
Exactly.
We have here.
And then next motion is, motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, it's a move, seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're done. Thank you, everyone.